I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own.
Good evening, everyone. They must be outside still waiting to come in. Ian, you think you've drawn the big crowd?
It was a late addition, they might not know. They might be coming till the 26th.
You'll have to come back again. At this time, it is our public input on agenda and non-agenda items. We welcome any members of the audience to speak at this time. Mr. McShane.
Alright, thank you, everybody. I've been really working hard on practicing how I can do this and get everything across to everybody in the shortest amount of time. Including the thank you. So, Mr. Carmelo, Dr. Watson, thank you guys for your ongoing support, the Board of Ed, all of, everybody sitting here, really. It's one of the reasons that I love being in this district is because really the work is aligned, everybody's aligned, and everybody is all about kids. I think that's the best way I can say it. And that is a very, that's a feeling that gives me a lot of pride, and it gives me an opportunity to talk about why we've been able to get a lot of stuff done. We've been able to make a good impact for our kids. So, I'm going to, I, so I'm gonna just go through, we got a mixture here of some data, and last year when we talked about data, we were able to talk about a lot of the progress, but we also put some pictures of kids in there, because I think it's important over looking at bar graphs that we're also paying attention to the kids, and that was the helpful advice of some people that I talked with today. Also get some kids in there so that we can see, it's not just numbers, these are actual Troy students, Troy families, that we're having a positive impact on. So, part of the expedite this process, mission and vision is the same, we've kept it the same, the words we always stick to is "together and relentless." That is a big part of our project at Troy Middle School, to make sure that all of us are working together and that we never stop working. Things have worked well, there's still a lot of things that we need to work on, but we're going after it full speed all the time, despite whatever challenges there might be. And then our vision, the big thing there is students learn by doing. We're seeing more and more classrooms where our kids are really engaged, they're doing, more kids are raising their hands, more kids are involved, and it's fun to walk in our classrooms and see that, see that occurring. These are our commitments, I'll just, again, briefly explain them to. Commitment one is our academic commitment, engaging relevant literacy instruction in all content areas. If our kids are strong readers, writers, communicators, thinkers, then they're gonna be good mathematicians, they're gonna be good scientists, they're gonna be good musicians, artists, all across the board. So, we have a tremendous focus on literacy, and we believe that's making, we know that's making a positive impact on our kids. And then second, our school community. We found a really good balance of making sure that our kids understand exactly what's expected of them, what our, what our protocols, our norms are. And then, we spent a lot of time with them just building community so that they're supportive of each other, the classrooms are places where the teachers are supporting the students, the students are supporting each other, and then all of our sports staff, our support staff is really working together to get that done. So, we wanted to be really concise there because we want to go really deep into those two things, which we've been able to do. Supporting the work, yonder pouches, I am gonna spend some time on this one because I have to thank you guys. There has not been a team meeting that we've gone into, or a faculty meeting, or any kind of a meeting where our teachers have not thanked us, and thanked you guys for supporting this, for allowing us to get the yonder pouches in schools. I just can't tell you how transformational it has been that the kids aren't on their phones, they're talking to each other, they're engaged, they're not trying to sneak out, meet each other in the bathroom. Those things have been greatly reduced, and it has just been an altogether transformational experience. So, I was just talking to some people in Saratoga that came actually to check out some things we're doing, and they actually said, I just give a lot of credit to your district for being out front of that and actually taking that stand. So, the yonder pouches have been very helpful, and not that the kids love it, but actually, I don't hear a lot of complaints from the kids. I think they really appreciate, without saying to us that they appreciate it, that they can actually, they can actually concentrate in school and they're not worried about all the nonsense that's going on on their phone. So, that has been transformational, we appreciate that. Our instructional coaches, we have three, one of them is here tonight, one of them is having surgery, and the other one just had a baby. Ms. Yoli just had a baby yesterday.
Yesterday.
And yeah, and then Ms. Marino has some surgery, but we are represented by Ms. Tumbo here, and we're happy to have our, thank you. We are very fortunate to have.
How much applause would a guy have to give?
But our three instructional coaches have been phenomenal, always in the classroom, always working with teachers, the coaching cycles has really helped build the capacity of our teacher, and they're really working hard with the kids. And really, that's our, that, those are the big gains that we're trying to make. It really has been led by our administrative team and our coaches to make sure that we continue to work with our teachers to, so that they are still to respond to student needs. We also have the support of our reading and writing project, and Mossflower. Lauren, who has become a very integral part of our team as well. I Ready this year has given us another resource to make sure our kids are getting the practice to make big gains, so that's been a huge addition. We have our additional APT, we've added more instructional support to our APT program so that the kids in APT have more instructional support. We have our inclusive discipline process that we put into place, which is really our community building and responding to student behaviors that are harmful to each other, are harmful to the classroom. That has made a big impact. Our after-school programs with Mr. Garland, working with Ms. Netto and Ms. Montasano. Those kids being here every day, keeping them connected to the school. My brother's keeper, my sister's keeper, all those things have just helped us build a really positive culture and climate, just spending a ton of time with kids and getting to know them really well. Our curriculum leaders have been a tremendous support. We also request our support for science and social studies. Our Stronger Connections Grant, which has helped us with our attendance data so that the kids that we identified as kids that have been missing school are now connected to an adult that they become very close with. And finally, our attendance specialist, all those things to improve our attendance rate. So, and there's a lot of things here, I could take forever to just, you know, talk about how phenomenal these things are, but these are things that have helped us support our kids and have helped us move forward with our results, really. Any of you, here's our student portion, so we see what the kids that we're talking about here. Any of you made it to the A, the musical show, it is phenomenal, yes. I really wasn't, I wasn't sure what to expect the first year it happened, and I was blown away. We have some unbelievably talented kids, Mr. Harvach and the whole crew. It's like, it's phenomenal, it's almost like an off-Broadway show. I'm not even kidding you, I'm not even kidding you, it's like, I couldn't even believe how great it was. So, that has been really cool, it gets our sixth graders involved in the school right away, it gets them connected to other kids that are doing things other than sports. So, that's been really cool to get that off the ground. This year, if you were going by here the day before Thanksgiving, you would have seen our whole school walking to RPI, which is in the rain. So, we went to an RPI women's hockey game, and it was such a cool experience. The kids got pizza, they got drinks, and I think the best part about it for me was, as we were leaving, some of the fans were telling our teachers that our kids were phenomenal, and that they did such a good job at the game, and they were great fans, and they were so supportive. I think even some of the girls came out after the game and said it was so cool to have such a big crowd there, and the kids were really respectful and had a lot of fun, so that was really cool. Up here in the Troy Room, we have our Bling Sale every holiday season, where our kids earn points for good behavior, and then they come in here and they shop for items that have been donated by our teachers and the people in our school community, and that is a really, really cool event. And then this year, we have a new TA that is a cancer survivor that printed t-shirts and made t-shirts that a lot of our faculty members bought as a fundraiser, and we're able to donate that money to cancer research, those are our teachers in the shirts. And, alright, so now we get to some of the data portion. We do have some more pictures along the way. Our equity goal, okay, to get to our equity goal, increase our Black students' math in ELA proficiency rates, that gets right underneath, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to make sure that they are making the same progress that all of our other students are making. And the second one, reduce disproportionality rates for Black students' suspensions and referrals, and reduce Black students' referrals and suspension. Looking at last year's data, we have to continue to dig deeper in this for goal one because the results remain about the same. So, they were right around thirty, twenty-eight percent for our proficiency rates for those students. So, that's an area that we are focusing on. Then I have to draw your attention to the second goal, which is our, the behavioral stuff, the suspensions and referrals. Our disproportionality rates from September of last year to March of last year, compared to this year, were eight percent lower in terms of disproportionality rates, and then we're also eight for suspensions and referrals. And then, the bottom number is where I'm really confident that that goal one is going to make a big jump. Because of all the programs and all the supports that I talked to you already about, we've seen a fifty-six percent decrease in total referrals for Black students, so more than half. More than half last year, so those kids are now back in classroom, they're not out of the classroom, they're back in the classroom, they're getting the instruction, and a thirty-one percent decrease in out-of-school suspensions for our Black students. So, again, those kids are now back in the classroom, they're not out, they're getting the instruction, they're participating with their peers in the classroom, and we believe that that is going to help us make big progress with that first goal as well. So, we're really, really proud of those numbers. More kids and teachers, we have a blind student, Mason, you see him on the left. Our teachers had a fundraiser, put a fundraiser together where they made those sweatshirts, sold sweatshirts, and we had a nice celebration in support of fundraiser for Mason. Special Olympics, same thing, we have students that are supporting us, the Special Olympics program. They did a phenomenal job, and they bring a lot of joy to the school. Switching back to the data. Here's our results for four years. So, you can see in ELA, we've made some gains, a little disappointed from the 22, 23, 23, 24 that we kind of leveled off in ELA, but you can see we made some big gains in math. And I'll just, although we were disappointed in ELA, if you look at that eighteen percent for math that year, we were working really hard that year too, it's just, it didn't happen. And we had to really dig in and figure out why didn't that happen. Then you see those next two years, we've made some big gains. So, we're confident in adjusting to, from what we were looking at, from why we didn't make big gains from last year to this year, we're really diving into some things that we think are gonna really help us move kids forward from year to year. So, eventually, we'll be looking at that big jump that you're seeing in math there as well. So, I'm just gonna briefly go through what this looks like at the different grade levels, and just point you to the fact that you can see over the time, we have, you know, successes and linear, I know that's something we always hear, there's gonna be some highs, there's gonna be some times where we're not exactly getting where we need to go, or where we want to go, but you can see overall that there is progress in proficiency. The proficiency rates are higher, certainly than they were for four years ago overall in ELA. And the big thing I went through last year that I want to go through again this year just briefly, the level one, moving the kids out of level one, getting from two hundred and ninety to two hundred and thirty, then over to the right. You can see two years ago, twelve percent of the kids we moved out of level one into two, three, and four, we had another twelve percent really this year. So, we're moving kids out of that area where they're kind of stuck and frustrated and not feeling confident, and moving them over into the areas where we're seeing more confident learners. Our big goal in ELA this year, this is one of the things we identified, the work that we've been doing across the board is getting our kids out of level one, but we weren't quite sure we were doing enough to get them to proficiency. And that's been our focus in ELA, making sure that the work is challenging enough and that we're exposing to the higher-level learning so that they, when they're sitting down in front of that test, that they, they're confident that they can do what they need to do. Sixth grade proficiency by year, again, you can see growth. We put the state goal there because our goal this year is fifty, is fifty percent in ELA, fifty percent in math and science, we want to get fifty percent across the board. Obviously, the goal is a hundred percent every year, but we believe fifty percent is a realistic goal to help us take the next step. So, sixth grade, you can see progress over the course of the last four years, getting closer to the state average. Seventh grade, again, moving to the right, moving up, more students have proficiency, getting to that state average, which is where we want to be this year. And then eighth grade is where we had to drop, and again, this is where we were certainly disappointed in that, but we feel like we've got a really good plan to make sure that we're getting that big jump that you're gonna see in math in a second. This is us compared to the local city school districts and the state, so at thirty-six percent, we're outperforming those, which again, you know, we want all kids to be successful, but it is a good measure for us to see how our kids are doing. So, there's our ELA data comparison. Another picture, we have downstairs a little free library that we put together to help us with our literacy goal, so the kids can go get books. We have scheduled so they can go downstairs, there's books available to them, there's obviously books in the library, but we just have gotten a bunch of books donated for kids in case there's not something in the library that they don't have, that they want to just take with them. There's no checkout and check-in process, they can just take the books. That's right downstairs by Mr. Hennessy. These are our students of the month, so again, when we're talking about the kids that we're moving out of level one over to two, three, and four, these are the kids. And I think it helps to see their, to see their faces. Not mine as much, but. Science data, our science data is, last year, the science test changed. This was another area that we were really working on. This is not where we want to be, but we believe that we have a good plan. Last year, things were different, changed, but we have a much better footing going into this year to make sure that the science data improves. In this room, you see our honor roll students that we celebrate every quarter. We're able to do it this quarter, but we'll do it third quarter, we take a nice picture of them. That's always exciting, and we have two spelling bee champions as well, Avery and Bria Marley. So, very, very proud of those kids there. And these are our life skill students, if you ever heard of these busy bakers come around and sell cookies and all that stuff, that's been a lot of fun. They bring a lot of joy to the community, they're doing math, they're communicating. It's a really, really powerful program that they put together. Not great for the waistline, there's a lot of cookies there, but everybody enjoys it. Here's the math data, and I pointed our teachers when we went over this with them, the yellow bar there, it's sort of how we feel about ELA after last year. We felt like we were working, but we just were doing something that was missing the mark. So, we're able to identify that through our coaches, curriculum leaders, principals, teachers, all working together. And then you can see the results of the last two years. So, we had some huge gains in sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade as far as our math proficiency results. Really proud of that, and actually, one grade level, we were outperforming the state in math, the state average, and we'll see that in a minute. So, this is again where you can see on that left, that level one, from three hundred and eighty-nine students down to two hundred and thirty students that are in that level one. So, those kids have moved out of there into that area again, where a lot of kids were getting stuck, and they're moving over to the right, into those areas where they're, again, more confident, more engaged learners, kids that believe that they can do it, we know how big that belief is. So, over the course of the last two years, you're looking at twenty-three percent two years ago, another twenty-two percent this year, so a huge move over to the right for our math students. Again, moving forward, progress every year after that twenty-one, twenty-two year, very close to the state average in sixth grade, that's what we're after this year to get to that or go beyond that. Seventh grade, progress, but we still have more work to do, obviously, to get to that state average. But again, steady growth there, and then finally, eighth grade is where you're gonna see that we actually, our eighth graders outperform the state for their math proficiency rates. So, there's continuous growth moving over to the right, and we got more and more students in our classes that are engaged, confident learners, teachers are confident teachers, and I just have to give everybody credit here for the fact that it started just with a belief in the kids, and then a belief that our teachers can teach our kids, and our kids can achieve at high levels. And it's really cool to see the math results getting there. We've made steady progress in ELA, but I believe we have some big jumps ahead of us based on the feedback that we're getting from the work that the kids are doing, the teachers' work, the coaches' work, all those people working together. So, that's our data, that's what we go by all the time, that's what we're talking about when we're in our meetings, and each, I want to be standing here with you next year talking about even more, even more growth. So, this is our math data compared to the other local city school districts. So, again, performing well, but we have higher places to go. We want to be, you know, right up there with the suburban districts in a year or two years. We want to be putting their information up there as well. We know our kids can do it, we know our teachers can do it with our kids. So, finally, how'd it do? How much time?
Nineteen minutes. Yes.
Sabina, you thought yours was seventeen minutes, it was like thirty-eight.
It was twenty-four.
She had snacks, you don't.
Yeah.
Yeah, great job, great job. Would you please have your staff stand up and introduce themselves to all of us? We, not all of us know who you are and what you do, so.
You know what, in my effort to be quick, I forgot to acknowledge these guys, which I'm glad you pointed that out.
I didn't, no, I must do, I was suddenly doing, I was doing. They were gonna get up and leave, but I was like, no.
I'm sorry about that. So, you met Linda, Dominica Hallett, who is our overall assistant principal, works with all.
She wants to stand up.
As much as you sound like, please stand up and introduce yourself. Hi. Dominica Hallett, assistant principal.
New York ELA assistant principal.
Brian Matthews, principal assistant.
I'm Linda Sembaw, instructional coach, mainly for eighth grade.
Well, I'm glad you did that, because I say this all the time to the parents who are here, there's not a harder working crew, a crew more committed to kids. You come in early in the morning, see them late at night, they're here. I just can't say enough about the team that we have, these guys are unbelievable. They support our kids in every possible fashion, academics, relationships, they've done a great job communicating with teachers. So, I apologize to you guys in front of everybody for not following. They certainly, they deserve any acknowledgement, praise that they get because it's just an unbelievable team, and you can't, you can't get results without people leading the work, and these guys are phenomenal leaders.
Ian, one question?
Oh, yeah.
Ian, so, ELA obviously is a struggle, as a board, what resources do you need? How do we support you in trying to get those numbers to where they have to go, right? I mean, what support?
Yeah, so our feedback really from looking at a lot of the data was that we were, again, moving kids over out of level one to level two, but we were feeling like, in talking with the teachers, they just needed to be, to get them out of level one and level two is a lot of work. You know, they gotta feel confident, we gotta put a lot of strategies in place to make them feel confident, to build the skills. Our next jump is to push them beyond that. And I think we have everything we need to do it, it's just we're, you know, we're in the classroom talking to teachers about getting to that level of rigor, getting to that level of challenge where kids are moving beyond that first step that they made and now getting to the next big step. So, it's not really, I mean, we've got all the resources we need, thanks to you guys, and thanks to everybody leading the work. I think it's just, you know, continuing to be in the classroom, make sure that kids are getting exposed to exactly what they're gonna see on the test, and things that are even harder than they're gonna see on the test so that they feel more confident. Because that's the feedback that we got back from math last year, was when those kids were taking the math test, they were saying like, this is easier than what we're doing in class. And we've got to do the same thing with ELA, make sure that like, you know, the practice is harder than the game type of thing.
Great, thank you.
It'll be interesting to see more focus on learning with the yonder pouches. I mean, I think our data across the high school and middle school is gonna change for this year.
Yeah, and I pointed to the, our Black students' reduction in referrals and suspension, but that's overall for our building, we're down a hash in each. So, about a fifty percent reduction in referrals, and not quite fifty percent in OSS, but around thirty percent in OSS too. So, our kids are here, they're not getting involved in other things that they were getting involved in, they were, you know, the phone was buzzing, or they're trying to sneak the phone, or those kinds of things. So, they're more available for learning in class, so I think it will make a big impact.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, you got it.
Great job.
Yeah, thank you.
There is a special place in heaven for anybody teaching in the middle school.
Really, I did it for three years. I need a special place.
Mr. Carmelo?
Appreciate it.
I felt like middle school.
Put my head forward. So, I, the tenth in the Friday Report for the Board tonight was supposed to be originally in our budget calendar draft two. There really hasn't been movement at the stake, although the one-half budgets did come out late yesterday. We'll talk about them a little bit at the end. But we'll do draft two next meeting, so this one's just gonna be a briefer, kind of just budget discussion. So, I always start with the mission statement, that will provide a strong educational and social foundation to graduate all students college and career-ready. You know, when you make your budget, that's what you have to keep in mind, so that we can make that a reality for everyone. That's the same slide, but I wanted to keep the first four or five slides in there, so really proud. Great job, Ian, really proud of everything going on in the district, proud of the stuff that's going on here. Sabina went last time, proud of the stuff going on in Carrollville. Just really, really great stuff, so how do we keep that going in the middle of a tough budget season that we haven't had in a few years? So, that's gonna be the goal, that is the goal that we're trying to do. And those two lenses, the budget development process, we gotta be educationally sound, so that all students can be successful and reach their full potential. All the supports and staffing and programs that we have in place all point to that educationally sound piece, and at the same time, be fiscally responsible. And I've said over and over again, I think we're great at the fiscally responsible, we have been great. You know, we've had a great run of low tax caps, zero tax caps, or tax levies. So, you know, we've done a really, really good job of balancing those two lenses. This year is a little bit more difficult. That's the same slide too, just to highlight again, those last four years. We did say last time, zero will be tough this year, that'll be one of the discussions that we can have tonight. We don't have to decide anything tonight over the discussions that we can start to have. We talked about this last time, and we put it in the Friday Report, but I just wanted to put it again to make sure, you know, we need to know where we're moving forward on that. So, remember when we talked about the transfer to capital, that was the small-city outlet. The great thing about the small-city project was we get the money back the next year after we spend it. So, we've spent about four million of it, which means we do about ninety percent back, so there's gonna be a three-point-six million dollar one-time building aid coming back in twenty-five, twenty-six. It's a non-recurring revenue, so you don't want to really use it to close any budget gaps, you can't really do that, you can, but it's not sound advice. So, what can you use it for? Well, if we use it for a transfer to capital to help with the increased cost of inflation that we've been talking about throughout this five phases of the project, it'll help us, I think with the bids that came in, this will, that's what we wrote in the Friday Report, right? When the bids came in, with this money on top of it, we'll be in a great spot. And then you get aid again on the money as you spend it, so it's like a recurring benefit. So, we said all that last time, I don't know, we don't have to really vote on it, but I probably gotta need a nod from the Board that we should move forward with that.
Yeah, I thought, yeah.
You guys all agree last time?
Yeah.
Alright, good, okay, excellent. So, and then we were, we have a four-point-one-ish deficit right now, I mean, there's a lot of stuff that still has to happen, and so, you know, we'll talk about some of it. that still has to happen, and so, you know, we'll talk about some of it. One of the things that, I mean, it's too early to decide on any of this stuff, right? But at some point, we're going to have to decide. So if we end up in a spot where, if we end up in a spot where that 4.1 is still too big, right? We have some plans, you'll see in a minute, we have an attrition plan, we have some things that we've talked about this week and will continue to review and talk about. I think we're making a lot of progress. But at some point, when you get to the end, if there's a gap, do we use reserves and if we do, how much, right? And so it's never, just like with the transfer to capital line, same thing, it's never good strategy to use too much reserves to, on recurring expenses, right? Be like paying your car payment or your mortgage payment from your savings account, you know, eventually you don't have your savings account anymore to do that. And the reserves are in there for certain reasons, right? The list of them there is towards the bottom. You have reserves that the state allows for all of those reasons, and they're in there to help when those things go wrong. But there are certain situations that they would use, one-time expenses, short-term fluctuations. In this case, we're trying to use it kind of as a transition because with an attrition plan that we'll talk about in a minute, we're hoping that the expenses that we're feeling this year will be lower next year. And so even though you don't want to use it for recurring expenses, if those expenses go down, then that transition can work, right? So our attrition plan is like two or three-year plan, and so we're, I don't know if I should say that we're comfortable because Adam keeps marking that down lower and lower every time we put this line together, it's now down to between one and 1.5 million. I think it gives him an adjective to put that number on there, so I don't say we're comfortable with that, but that's what we'll recommend. If we're at the end and the state hasn't, has come through, but not all the way, I think, I mean, our goal right now inside one of the slides is to avoid layoffs. We are going to cut positions, but do it through attrition and not, you know, hand somebody notice and says, you're not working here next year anymore because of the budget, we're not going to do that, budget-related layoffs. If that's your goal as well, which I hope it is, then at the end, if we still have a gap of between one and 1.5 million, I think I'd talk Adam into using that money to close that gap.
John.
Is that a good way to say it?
I'm comfortable with that.
You what?
I'm comfortable with that number as long as we stick to the plan.
As long, yes, that's right.
I'm going to back up to the transfer to capital. We do, we do have to vote on that, you just, once you come up with the figure.
Well, it'll be in the budget.
Okay.
So it's in these numbers, right?
Okay, so that's what you're going to present to us, okay?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It'll be voted on when we do that.
Now, normally, when we transfer to capital, we always, don't we leave it there for our upcoming projects?
Well, that's in capital reserve.
Okay, so that's, will we be doing that?
Right now, we don't have a vote or authority from the voters for more capital reserve. So we have to go out to the voters and they have to vote on it to establish a new one. Every one we voted on has been used to this point.
Right, so if we find, I mean, that has been so helpful to move our district forward with our capital projects without burden on the taxpayers, so.
Probably a next one conversation because if you have a gap like that, you know, you can't really take money and put it into a reserve. I mean, let's see how the state plays out, but I don't think that's something we would entertain this year.
All that vote does is allow you to establish it and put funds in it if you wish. So for example, if they voted in May, choose the dollar figure, you say what you're planning on doing, but then at the end of the year, the board votes every June to say, okay, this is how much we can put in up to, and then, you know, we don't get those final numbers until August once the audit's all wrapped up, but we could do it. I am slightly worried about voter fatigue. We just did one last year, so I just don't want to, you know, hammer them every year, but I think having it established is a great idea. I mean, it gives you the authority to put it in, you don't have to put any money in, you know, just at the end of the year if you have a good year.
But I don't see how it would hammer the taxpayers if we're not raising taxes.
Well, I think he just means fatigue about explaining it again, you know.
He's just doing it.
Nobody wants to talk more again, okay?
Ian, Ian seemed like he liked it a lot. What did you get, the student pictures up there? They split up.
I, I just, I just get nervous because we're.
Yeah, we can talk about that.
Okay.
I mean, it has been perfect for when we're doing the project. I don't know if we can talk about the next project after this comes in.
We'll be true to the text, we can now go.
Okay, so that's the reserve uses, again, that's not something we'll decide right now, but again, at some point, if that gap is still there, we're going to recommend in that range to close it with reserves. And then Adam just said he's comfortable as long as the plan stays in place. And so the plan is the attrition plan that we kind of started last year, and it is in place now. I don't know if it's strictly in place now, which is kind of what Adam's alluding to. So the attrition plan last year that we wrote, remember we wrote we were going to be conservative and strategic in our choices and be careful with the money and all the things we always do. As people retired or left the district for other reasons, do we have to replace those people, right? That's what the attrition plan really is. And so some of them we have replaced this year, you know, a lot of them, I would say we probably have, but we just met as a cabinet on.
Tuesday.
To go through some things, and we have five or six positions that we have not replaced. So we are already doing that, so you see that we've identified fourteen or fifteen positions to be reduced. Five or six are already positions that are in our district, in certain buildings that we haven't, that we, you know, a co-teacher left and we didn't fill that co-teacher. A coach just recently left, is she going yet?
Today.
Today. A coach left today. Her last day was today. We're not going to backfill that. So things like that, that's where Adam wants to make sure, if we're going to use reserves in the tune of 1.5 million, that we have to make sure that that attrition plan is strict and everybody's aware of it, and we go into next year knowing that, you know, listen, if it's a 10th grade math teacher, you have to replace them because they have all five classes of kids in them, but if it's a position that we can figure out a way to do it, then we'll do that. So that'll be probably, my guess is, you know, it's already going this year, a two-to-three year plan, but we're comfortable using reserves, knowing that with that attrition plan, our expenses will also go down over the next year or two. And there are fourteen or fifteen positions, so there's five or six that we already haven't filled. We'll talk a little bit about class sizes, probably towards draft two, all of these things will be in draft two, once we flesh them out. We have to meet with the administrators, we did it as a cabinet yesterday, so I won't give you too much detail on them yet, but we will get to them next time. But we've talked about our class sizes at the elementary level a lot of times, they're really fantastic and they've been great for us. The co-teachers have been great for us, they've been so impactful for kids, they've been great for kids and great for our achievement, student achievement. But we've looked at and identified two buildings, four sections of the two buildings, so three in one and one in the other, that we can reduce sections and those class sizes are still 17 or 18. So we're, we're in a really great spot. Don't do the math to figure out what they must have been for the last three years or whatever. How long, Sabina? I asked Sabina, she's been here, so I can make fun of this. But they've been great, they've been great because they've been so low, so even with those reducings in those sections, we're still at like 17, 18, and there's really no section, I think 20 is the highest in the district, those were even reductions. So we're really in a great spot. And then there are a few other things that we're still working on, but we were comfortable last time, yesterday, it wasn't two minutes, it was like a three-hour meeting. We went through, we went through every position that we've hired over the last five years, we went through every position that's in all the schools, one by one. It was, it was a good practice for us, it was a good experience, and after doing that, we felt really good that, again, we're trying not to lay anybody off, and I think we're all confident and comfortable now, knowing that we won't have to do that and still be able to reduce positions that, you know, without the layoffs. And we have some other ideas to do that too that we'll share next time. And then the other thing we can talk about, again, we don't have to decide, we had zero the last four years, right? And we had zero a few years before that, we've been really, really great. I think the number was five percent total over nine years, right? So I think it's probably time, I hope the taxpayers are appreciative of what we've done the last four years and will allow some increase. Now, I guess one thing I should have on the slide with the advocacy, because we've been doing a lot of advocacy, I sent the letter that I sent to a few of the senators and legislators to all of you, I think it got some traction, John McDonald was sharing it as well, we had a small city meeting Monday with some of those same legislators that were on there, the one-house budgets had some stuff in it, so there's a chance, I guess, that, you know, we get so much money from the state that, and we don't have to talk about this, but my guess is it won't fill the whole gap. So we gave a bunch of examples, the tax cap is 257, you know, I always think going right to the cap, you know, I think the voters get a little bit, they feel a little bit a certain way about that, but I'm hoping we can be in the 2% range. The 2% range is below the tax cap, it would still raise. If we're like in this spot that we are in right now, that'll raise a little over $750,000. And then I had Adam do a little calculation, so for the average homeowner, we're talking about $6 a month on a 2%. And then, you know, I asked him to give us a whole bunch of choices, so you can go half percent, one, one and a half, two. The revenue raise is the middle column, that's how much going towards that gap that we would get from the taxpayers. And then the, you know, average monthly, approximate monthly cost, that would be. Questions about that? You already have some ideas about that? You don't like any of that?
Well, it's going to be tough because, I mean, you have three years with nothing, but it's just going to be bad timing. I mean, the way, you know, the economy is a stock market, I mean, all this stuff is, it's going to be a hard sell, you know? People are.
I definitely, I definitely don't like 2%.
Absolutely not.
Absolutely not, as taxpayer, as a taxpayer, but I, now, if we do, like say if we do one and a half percent and raise a half million, are we still doing the, what you're saying with the attrition?
Attrition, reserve, these are all, these are all part of the same package, yeah.
With that figure.
We do a little bit more, right? So if, let's say we were done, let's say this is April and this is draft four or whatever, maybe draft three or two might be the end, but we're done and we're still have a gap of, let's say $2 million, right? We're done, we did our attrition without layoffs by the 14 or 15, maybe find one more or two more, we have a $2 million gap. So if we use one and a half million for reserves, we could go one and a half, that's 500,000, that closes a $2 million gap. If the gap is 3 million at that time, well then, if we're still only using one and a half reserves, now we're going to be off 1.5. Now, if you tell me we're still going to stay at 1.5% and only get a half, 500,000, now you got to say that, if you want two and a half in reserves, then you're setting the district up for precarious future. So we're not there now to decide that, but it's good to start thinking about that conversation. If you guys are telling us that 2% is going to be a tough sell, then we probably got to go back to the 14 and 15 and find more positions. That's probably what we have. You know, and we always try to do that with a less negative impact on students, but it gets hard. If that, if you're telling me I need another million dollars, that's probably another 15 positions, right? You told me this was a million, right?
Yeah, that's a million.
So, you know, we got to go back and find 15 more, so now you're talking about affecting, you know, Ian just was talking about all the gains he made, and part of the gains is because of all the support we have in place and all of the things we got going on in the district. So, I mean, 15's not going to destroy it all, but it's going to affect kids 15 more. So that's the kind of, that's the thing. We'll see how much the advocacy helped and how much more we get from the state. We'll put actual numbers to those positions, we'll see where we are, we'll see how much reserves we have, and then we decide on that. No. But, you know, I thought two would be reasonable, I hear you, so we won't be banking on two unless we.
Well, I mean, that's, that's just me, and I have, I'm a little outspoken, so I'm somebody else.
Well, no, obviously, obviously we're all taxpayers, but I guess the question is, and maybe this is more for Adam, so with the formula to get this tax levy, whatever we decide on for this, isn't that the number that we have to start at for next year? Right, that's the baseline for next year's tax. Right, so then with that being said, obviously, I don't.
In that regard, you try to go as high as you can.
Right, and I don't, I don't see the financial situation getting better for us, so, you know, we have to keep in mind that whatever we pick, that's what we're going to start in next year, so if the budget is worse next year, we kind of shock ourselves on the foot because we're not going to be able to go higher, if that makes any sense, right? Is that my?
The baseline, yeah, the tax levy will start at a higher number next year, right? We'll get it going.
Okay.
Well, we certainly want the question to go down, so I mean, that's why we're having the discussion. I don't know what the citizens of IJAC mean with the.
No, I second the conversation, I think if you don't pick on the sapping plan and the reductions, obviously not oppositions are created equal.
Yeah.
And then if the economy continues to go down, people end up extending their retirement lives, so they're actually here and they're staying on longer, so that could, that could snowball too, where that's not the reduction that we count on.
Yeah, the attrition plan, yeah, cover it, what's your answer? Good point.
I think my fear is more of us losing the budget completely, if we hit, if we hit the 2% mark. Now, not that I'm, I'm against the, you know, that's what I'm afraid.
Everybody's worried about the stock market, worried about the whole economy right now, so we're not, who would say no to us, we don't want that.
Can you talk about losing the budget, can you just explain that?
Yeah, tell them what Adam's.
Well, the budget gets voted down. If we, if we have to do 2% because the gap is still what it is, and that's where we are, if the budget got voted down. You have two choices. You can redo it. So at that point, we could say, alright, we use one, go to 1% and find new positions or find more reserves or whatever we would do at that point, put a new budget out, it's usually mid-June, right?
Yeah.
So May 20th, everybody votes and then we go out another one because ours went down, it would be like mid-June, and then we, we could put the same exact one out or you can adjust.
We can.
If it goes down twice, wow, you can do what's a contingency budget, and that's what we did.
2010 and 11 or?
Two years in a row.
The district went to a contingency budget before my time, because the board has voted it down and then they went contingency. Contingency budget, 0%?
Zero, yeah.
Contingency budget is 0% tax levy?
This regime.
It's 0% tax increase, but there's a lot of restrictions. There's restrictions on community leave-in use of the buildings, there's restrictions on purchasing of equipment. During those two years when we were on contingency, our technology, that's when it really took a hit because you couldn't buy any equipment, you can't buy any computers, so we would, if it happened, we would probably go out at a lower percent and try to get the board to say yes, and then you go out and meet with everybody and try to make sure we sell it. I mean, I hope it wouldn't happen.
Are you going to do your camera?
Yeah, we would do all that.
But they've got to be attended by the public.
Right.
I mean, usually when we go to the schools, it's only two or three people, but they have to, we have to get them in there.
I mean, if it went down and we were going out for a second, I think we would try to get out of the community basis. We do an exit interviews, exit surveys though, right? We would read those and see what people are saying, why they voted down if it didn't happen that way.
Josh, it isn't good when we, I mean, we couldn't, you know, snowplow, lawn mowers, we couldn't buy anything for Jesus, so it wasn't, wasn't the situation a pan.
Well, it's a good discussion, so this is, again, state might come through, we'll keep reviewing that, and then, you know, if it's a better idea, we'll get to draft two.
At the beginning of the budget process, I think you go to the administrators and you kind of rank everything, is there an opportunity to revisit that?
Yeah, and then we go back to them as we're getting. Yeah, and then we go back to them as we're getting, like, I'll meet with teachers, principals with the reduction sections, just to make sure that, you know, we have it all right and make sure it's not something that we haven't seen. And we'll go back and talk to them all about the 14 or, about the 14 and 15, everybody that's involved in that is certainly equal. So, we'll continue to monitor state budget, that's gonna be the key right now, that's what we're waiting on. I mentioned the one-house budget, they were really late yesterday, we really haven't got a chance to look at it too much, but the 2% minimum that the governor put in, both of the one-house budgets made it 3%, actually, one of them was 2.9%. So, that doesn't mean it's gonna happen that way, but it looks like for everybody it'll at least go up. And then there were a few tweaks to some factors that John McDonald sent to us, that Adam's still reviewing, but things that might also help us with what they reduce.
Yeah, if you want to talk a little bit about that. I mean, they're kind of detailed, but you just don't know what the numbers are really until they do the A runs. So, once income, wealth and debts, eliminating what's called a floor, which is as low as it can go, but we don't know how everyone else gets impacted. So, it's, it's almost impossible to tell. Bottom line is, just try to drive as much money as possible. There's kind of two lenses. If everyone gets more money, it kinda drives the inequity of everything, so that's one piece of it. But if you remove the floor, you know, like the big five cities, for example, like it drives a ton of money in that area, so we just don't know what that number's gonna be. So, we're just coming up with plans, you know, not knowing where the end game is gonna be, barring some catastrophic event in the next couple of weeks, you know, I think we'll be able to get there, that 4 million, I think we'll be able to get there, you know?
From your state or shaking out?
I'm sorry?
No, with our whole plan.
With the whole plan, with the whole plan. Okay.
But that plan included 2% in pockets?
It does include 2%, but I wanna say that, you know, in our meeting, in our cabinet meeting, you know, it wasn't just stop there. I mean, Dr. Watson was really great about like, let's keep pushing this to the next step and the next step, because that's kind of what we need to do, looking towards next year already, you know, not just this budget, but like next year. And, and, you know, no one wants to do certain things when things get bad, you know, that's the simple fact. You know, they're all hard decisions. I feel like I've been saying it for three years, like, we've been planning for this, it's very hard to do, and, you know, it's a balancing act, it's a huge balancing act, but that's what we're all here to jointly make those decisions and, you know, we'll see how it goes. You know, I really don't wanna spend a lot in reserves because of the stock market, and I think all three of us have just definitely lived through, and then others at the board table lived through, really, really bad budgets. So, you know, when the stock market goes down, our retirement costs go up, and that's a couple million dollars, so it goes quickly, a couple million goes quickly, so it's just seeing where it ends up. So, if you ever talk to a state legislator, push for as much money as you can, you know, we, we can't tax our way out of a budget problem. That's the simple fact. You know, one, 2% is a million dollars, and we have a $104 million budget, so, you know, we're so highly, highly reliant on state aid, it's not funny, so that, you know, we really need them to do as much as they can.
And that's the person we sent to, John, John's great, you know, he's always accessible and supportive, but he sent us some of the details of the one-house budget and he said everybody's getting 3%. And I immediately sent back, well, giving everybody 3, just ruin, it doesn't ruin it, it's not pay 3, but there are districts that are thrilled that they got to 2 because they were expecting 0 because they've been overfunded for 10 years, and now you've given them a whole other percent, take that money and give it to us, or districts like us, you know, not just us. So, it's just the easy way out for them is just give it to everybody so that they don't have, you know, in their head, winners and losers, I guess, but I said to them, you do have winners and losers when you do it like that, and it's not, and it's not fair and equitable. So, he answered us immediately and he thinks, you know, he's listening to his people who are doing the same calculations that Adam's trying to do, but he thinks the other factors are gonna help us. So, we'll see, we'll see. I mean, it's not gonna close the gap by itself, but this whole picture together, I think...
John also understands that our tax bases control it.
For sure.
You know, so, I mean, we aren't...
During this year, you'd be taxed a little bit higher and not worried about it. Oh, sorry. So, we'll look more in detail on the one-house budgets, there were some other things in there, but really, we went right to the foundation, see what it looked like. We already are continuing our advocacy, we'll continue to review our own budget, like Adam just said, you know, it was more than just a one-year thing we were looking at, you know, okay, what will be the next level of stuff that we might be able to do to get that 14 and 15 to go up higher if we needed to? So, all that'll come into play in the 26, two weeks from tonight. Hopefully, we'll have a little more information from the state. The state budget won't be done at that point, but hopefully, we've got a little more information so we can put some real details to the draft.
Okay. Can, do we know how much, are we allowed to know how much is in the reserve? Like, what's the total amount in reserve, or is that...
Yeah, well, you vote on the reserve numbers at every June. So, and then some of them get used, right? So, the, every June...
So, last June, we voted on what to do.
You vote on how much goes in each, each reserve. So, I listed them here. The RSTRS, that's the retirement system, unemployment, which we haven't had to use in a while, because we haven't really had, you know, back in those days when we were laying people off, that unemployment reserve was high, because you had to pay unemployment tolls to people who laid off, right? It's not free when you lay them off. The tax surcharge, I was gonna say, that, we, we do have to dip in there once in a while, right? That's a reassessment, usually businesses, the old one right now, Crossgate's got their assessment lowered, so they, you know, they have to figure out how to pay for that, so liability is lawsuits and things, we had that with the Child's Victims Act, workers' comp, and the EBLR. You wanna say it? Go ahead.
You can say whatever you want.
No, because you wanna say EBLR, even though the L is after the X. Adam calls that EBLR. Anybody that can read knows that's an EBLR.
And you can call anything you want, okay?
That is, that is employee benefits and liability reserve. A crude liability reserve. So, that's when people leave us, you know, all the benefits that they get, so that's, so those are all the reserves. Every June, you vote, last year, we put 500,000 in one, 200,000 in one, you gotta vote on that, you know, that's new world rule that has that.
Josh, can I answer your question?
Thank you for your time. John? Yeah, yeah. Ian made a point about turnout at the public areas. Have we thought about, I don't know if it's possible, but like, making a recording that people could access from like the, yeah, either from the district webpage or something, and they can submit questions, you know? I know, I've had this, you know, arguing, assisting, with the example, that a lot of people just don't have time to get out to those meetings, but if there was someplace that they could go and see the presentation, and if they had questions, you know, follow up, you know, through an online source or something, is that something we could do? Yeah, it's something we could do. Jason wanted to talk. I don't know if it would be just maybe the budget hearing or something, and then we send that out, or if I do a separate one...
Yeah, I think if, I think if you're doing content like that, you probably wanna condense it a little bit, right? I don't think most people are gonna sit down and watch a 35-minute recording of a budget presentation.
Unless they engage.
I was just gonna say that.
If we could give like the basics, I could just go on and give the basics.
But how would we do the question?
I like that idea.
But, and then...
You have to do a follow-up.
Yeah, we'd have to do a follow-up, right? To answer questions, or, or do a live stream, like, and have them...
Answer the questions at least.
I think it's just like a highlight, key points, and you get out on a quick, you know?
I don't think I'd wanna lie.
Well, yeah, but we could answer our questions, either follow up with people if they left their numbers or something, so how many questions? I like it, good idea. Thank you.
Okay, now for the meeting part, programs. Approval of Minutes, motion on the floor for approval of Minutes, February 26, 2025.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Superintendent Recommendation, Human Resources Staff Matters, unclassified, declassified, under unclassified, motion on the floor for consent agenda items 1 through 7.
Second.
Discussion. Mike Pearl, would you please stand up and introduce yourself to us?
My name is Mike Pearl. I have a master's in secondary education from the University of Bridgeport and a bachelor's in arts degree from the University of Michigan. I am a Troy High School graduate in 2007. Thank you. I figured I'd backtrack my education somehow. Principal Jack Romello was my principal in high school. Thank you very much for... Yes, I just recently, well, tonight I should be approved for the...
Oh, you know it.
Principal Assistant Position. I practiced, if I knew I was gonna speak, I would have practiced. Principal Assistant Position at Community School, down on Fifth Avenue, so I'm very excited. It's nice to see everybody again, it's been a while. I worked for the district back in 2013, before I took a job at the New York State Assembly, but I just returned to substitute teach and was given this great opportunity to apply for that job down at the community school, so thank you all for what you do on a continued basis, and you really do make a great difference. I'm really thankful to be a part of this team.
Don't forget to vote, to elect the vote. Danielle, welcome, and congratulations on your, your cert, your cert, so you're officially ours. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Mike, now you're official. Under classified, motion on the floor for approval of items, item 1 as listed.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Under Superintendent Recommendation Programs, motion on the floor for consent agenda items 1 and 2.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Superintendent Recommendations, Business Finance, motion on the floor for approval of item number 1.
Second.
Discussion. It was good to get these kids in, Adam.
We had a very good time.
Yeah, everybody was like, wow, they were shocked that they came in, where they came in, so... All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. District Announcements, all meetings will take place at 6 o'clock for our middle school. I had Teresa write down what our meetings are gonna be like for the next month, the only added, the next couple, three months. The only thing that will be added to this will be the presentations.
And the PTA meetings.
PTA meetings, so for budget presentations. So, and anybody that's available to show support of the budget once we pass it, you're welcome. Good news, I'm gonna make it short, James, I'm sorry, I'm gonna do this with notes here...
You do what you gotta do.
Okay. Troy Elementary School celebrated a love of reading and literacy last week to recognition across America the week. Thank you all, our staff will have a plan and guide it and coordinate it. And, let's see, several elementary art students from Carroll Hill, School 2 and School 16 have work displayed at the elementary state, at the Empire State Plaza as part of the K-3000 Empire State Plaza Art Collection exhibit. Our students created pieces inspired by the abstract expressionist, expressionist pieces displayed throughout the plaza. The exhibit is on display on the South concourse until March 23rd. March is music in our school month, and last week, the THS Jazz Band and Select Choir joined ensembles from many other school districts performing at the Empire State Plaza. Detroit Hydrama Club presents Anastasia, performances will be April 4th, 5th, and 5th at 7:30 and April 6th at 2:00 p.m. To conclude Black History Month, there was a, an opportunity here, Mrs. Patricia Super Wilson, at... Where was she? Students were excited to see her.
Carroll Hill.
Carroll Hill, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wilson, we remember her, kid boys, when they used to go to school here. The spring sports season is just around the corner, with many practices beginning next week, and games kicking off later this month. The full athletic schedule, including modified and JV teams, is available on our website. Best of luck to all our student athletes. Does anybody else have any more good news or wanna listen to Ian recite something?
Andrew, quick, Odyssey of the Mines this weekend?
Oh, I wanna get that.
That's Cuxackia Athens, so I think School 14, 16, 18, Carroll Hill. I think that might be it. Any high schools, middle school, high school, so, yeah, so they'll be competing.
Last year, we had a team go to the World...
My, my son is in it, it's the first time he's in, so I'll just say that the teachers that are putting their time in, it's like an awesome program, I'm just really excited to go and check it all out, so.
Oh, well, then you give a report next week.
Yeah, I'm good, you do a good job.
If no one else, does anybody have anything else? Okay. Oh, Quest R3 program, a few of us are gonna go to the, their, what is it, their annual meeting, their annual presentation, so if anybody's interested in going, let Teresa know. Usually, it's, we used to go all the time, and we kind of like, since COVID, we've kind of put it on the back burner, so, and they usually have them on Wednesday night, so we can't go, but we don't have a meeting that Wednesday, so anybody that's interested, let Teresa know. There'll be, I know Diana, you're going?